Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's invite my chief up, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mary.
No problem.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. This is very important, very crucial promotion of Officer Scott Keith to the rank of police sergeant. This is crucial. Supervision is super important to, you know, pretty much any company, but especially in law enforcement. So we have a very young department. Things change rapidly. The laws, how, you know, it's expected by the public from us. So it's not, you know, I always say enforcing the laws is only a partial fraction of what we do. There's so much more to law enforcement now. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, we answer the phone and respond. It's not just we're molesting people. Whatever they need, you know, they feel simple, call us and we help out. There's a lot of different, you know, things that we do in law enforcement. You know, be honest.
He needs a mic.
You gotta go on the mic.
Just point it to him.
Hold that one.
No, no. Just, you're good. Okay.
You're not coming up on the microphone.
Do I have to repeat everything?
No, 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 we're good, we're good.
Repeat everything.
Supervision is, is super important and it's only fair, you know, to the officers that need that supervision, to, you know, the upper echelon, that, you know, we really rely on supervisors to make sure everything's being done properly and that the young officers are getting the guidance they need. It's also fair to the citizens of Lacy Township, alright? And I always tell everybody, that's what we do this for. We're in public service. It's not, hey, what can I get, you know, as the chief of police? Or what's the town giving me? Or, you know, what's owed to me? It really is what we can do for the township and the residents. And it's not possible without you. I can say this as a lifelong resident of Lacy Township, been here my whole life. Yeah, and very proud to be part of this department, super proud to leave this department. As you can see by the response, you know, of all the officers who showed up today, yeah.
It's important.
It's very important and, you know, it says a lot. So, officers, thank you so much for, you know, your support, supporting, you know, your fellow officer in this promotion. And, you know, someday I feel, you know, I'm gonna be gone. You know, this is important, support each other and, you know, just, you know, be proud. Be proud of this time and let's understand, and I want to thank the committee for their support. So truly, thank you, you know, all the committee members. We have tremendous support from the committee. We have a plan in place, you know, to get us to a certain level, to get, you know, the amount of staffing we need, the amount of supervision we need, and they have not reneged. They've just been, you know, complete advocates and supporters of the police department and I can't say enough. And I want to thank each and everyone personally. Veronica, Ray as well, thank you so much for your support of the police department. That being said, the man of the hour, Scott Keith, front and center, please. Alright, so I know most of this, but I don't want to forget any of it. So Officer Scott Keith is a lifelong resident of Lacy Township. He graduated from Lacy Township High School in 2005. He also graduated from Kane College with a bachelor's in criminal justice. He began his career in law enforcement with the Seaside Heights Police Department. He came over to Lacy, took the test, came over to Lacy in 2013 and was hired by us in 2013. So he's an 11-year veteran of the police department. During that time, he's established himself as a, you know, one of the, one of the things I find very important, a field training officer. And why that's so important, because he's the one responsible for molding the young minds and developing these young officers to become, you know, the good officers that they're gonna become in their careers. It's crucial, we don't put it in the hands of just anybody. It's gotta be somebody who's dedicated, somebody who wants to do that job and who does it well, and Scott does. So, you know, I really, I'm really impressed with that, no complaints, he does a really good job with that. On top of that, he's a drug recognition expert, takes a lot of schooling and a lot of patience. What that means, he goes out and somebody who's under the influence of narcotics or other drugs, he has to sit with that person and determine, you know, by giving them tests, talking to them and determining if, you know, what they're under the influence of. Takes a lot of patience and a lot of determination and Scott does it well. So not a lot of people want to do that and Scott can do that. Couple other things, he's a crash investigator, so for our serious accidents, they go out, not every accident requires a diagram and, and, you know, marking the scene. So it's, it's a, it's a science and it requires a lot of skill, competence and ability, which Scott has. He's also an ATV operator. He's helped me out in a situation. We had a, a missing endangered person in the woods out off of 539. We were out there with the sheriff's department, they couldn't find him with a drone for like over two hours. Scott Keith found him in 15 minutes on an ATV, probably less than 15 minutes. So, I mean, helped me out greatly. So, you know, I don't forget, thank you Scott for that. And the other thing, he represents us well as part of the honor guard. So he's out there during our parades, never complains and does his job. And he looks good, he stays in shape, he looks good and he looks great in uniform, which is important. So I'm getting onto some of his awards, I have to read those. So Scott takes DWI enforcement very, very seriously. He's won the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award four times. The Jason Marles DWI Award winner, that was, Jason Marles is an officer I went to the police academy with at the end of his shift one day, I forget what year it was, he was on his way home and he was killed by a drunk driver on the Garden State Parkway. So it means a lot to me, he was my classmate, he was a very good, a good man. And he's also two-time nominee for the Kimberly Smith Ames DWI Award. So, so.
Wonderful.
What I say, what I say with Scott, you know, to those, you know, to the doers, you know, come to the rewards and the spoils. So you have that part down and I respect that. There's a lot of good candidates that we interviewed and, you know, behind, you know, on the list as well. Scott has not failed in anything we've asked him to do. So if you're a good officer, continue that. You know, mentor the new guys. Don't let up. Now you have another, you know, task you have to reach and that is leadership and supervision. You have to, you have to lead these officers, you have to supervise these officers at a different skill level. You've not failed us and I don't believe you're gonna fail us at all. I think you're gonna do a wonderful job, keep it up, keep your foot on the gas, keep moving forward, count, you know, on your officers. You don't know everything, I don't know everything, rely on your fellow sergeants, listen to your lieutenants, you know, your captain, your chief. But rely, you were a great senior officer, rely on your senior officers as well.
Fantastic.
Yep, further ado. Just wanting to announce, his parents, James and Mary, his sister and brother-in-law, Erica and Christian, his niece and nephew, Haley and Carter, extended family members in the audience and friends and fellow officers.
Very nice, very nice.
Okay, resolution 2024-233, resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey promoting Scott R. Keith to the position of police sergeant for the Lacy Township Police Department.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Now we will swear him into his position to make it official.
Come over here. And anybody from the family who want to come up. Go ahead. She told me she was gonna pin him, that's for sure. You're fine, don't rush.
She's good. Lucky.
Come here bud, come hold it.
Hold that thing, bud.
I, Scott R. Keith.
I, Scott R. Keith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police sergeant.
Perform all the duties of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Don't poke him. Well, if you have to.
One chance you get.
Oh. How nice. Alright, great job.
More?
Oh, so, what I like to look at, first of all, how many other professions do you have where your, these many of your fellow workers or, you know, camaraderies, brothers come out to support you? Even, even, we have some retired ones too, back there. But what I really like to look at is the family and the pride on their faces as they look upon you because, you know, the, the quality, I've been here for 20 years now. It's amazing, the quality of, of the officers we have are just amazing. Just, you know, I, I tell people all the time and, and not to bring up a negative, but you, you hear about things happening in other states and I, I, you know, I, I attribute that to lack of training maybe and not being able to get the cream of the crop. And we've been very lucky in Lacy Township to get the cream of the crop. And time after time when we, we have a hire or we have a promotion and the chief or captain come up and they speak of, of that person, I'm just blown away by their, their history, their education, everything that goes with it. Scott, I know you're gonna do a great job. I, I know that all the things that the chief said are true and he, he believes in you as they all believe in you, otherwise I don't think they would be here. And that's, I think that's what, what it means, you all believe in each other and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis.
Yeah, congratulations Scott, you should be very proud of your, of your accomplishments. We always say how important it is to have such an intimate knowledge of the townships and, you know, considering how long you've been here, you're like, you know where all the, the hiding spots are. And I played baseball with Scott for a number of years and he could hit a baseball better than I can, which isn't saying much, but it's something. So, congratulations.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. You know, I would duck hell for these two gentlemen. One of the things that's always amazed me is that nobody, none of our officers leave to go to another town. And that says a lot. You get here, I've always said this is the best police force in the state of New Jersey and nobody leaves, but when we have an opening, guess what? We got a lot of applications from people out of town. I think the chief will, will verify that. And that means they want to come here. Why? Because we're good, you're good. And this is an example, Scott, Lacy resident, I love it because he knows where the teenagers are gonna be making trouble. It's as simple as that, because he was probably doing it. So with that Scott, I congratulate you and I hope you're gonna lead us in the right direction. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations and it's wonderful joining up the ranks there. We're so fortunate what our captain and our chief and the rest of our force has done in the last year and a half, we have just, we have moved forward and we're just doing a wonderful job and I'm so proud. And I say we, meaning you, not me, you. We've, we've, you've really put, the effort in is just seen and it's, we're, we're just so proud of all of you. And when this happens, when, when a promotion happens, it just, it makes us feel even that much better. So I'm just grateful, thankful and thank you, all of you blue here and green back there on that shirt I see. Congratulations, thank you.
You done then?
Yes, that's it, you guys are good to go.
Gotta go home.
Well, excuse any of the family or anybody that wants to come.
Mayor, please give.
Thank you.
So we don't need any drones, right?
No. No drones.
Congratulations Scott.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Scott, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you gentlemen.
No drones.
And family.
Thank you.
In recess, the family and the police officers are welcome to, um...
Alright, you guys can, uh, if you'd like.
Go about your business, go ahead, it won't make you stay. We won't hold you here any longer.
Want me to pause the tape first?
Excuse me?
First, wait, pause the tape for a minute?
Yeah, you can.
Pausing the tape.
Thank you Captain.
Captain, how are you?
Nice to see you, good to see you, good to see everybody.
See you later. You let me know Steve when it's back.
I totally forgot, I had, I failed on my job already, they're gonna fire me. Failed on my job.
Okay. Special use permit, Turn the Town Reel for Ovarian Cancer in September.
Turn the Town Teal is a national campaign to create awareness for ovarian cancer. We have a resident reach out to us at this time every year to honor her mother-in-law who lost her battle with ovarian cancer. So she will post the ribbons across town and the ribbons will be accompanied by a, just need, a card, that explains, symptoms card, sorry, that will explain awareness and they, she will put them up on September 1st and she'll remove them on September 30th.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. That's it, that's all we have.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag. In a moment of silence, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First reading of ordinance 2024-19 authorizing the sale of block 101 dot 12, lot 168 to adjoining property owners.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of block 101 point 12, lot 168 on the municipal tax map to Scott Minter and Elizabeth A. Griggs and Philip Willer in accordance with provisions of NJSA 40A colon 12 dash 13B. This is the sale of an undersized lot to the adjoining property owners, the fair market value of $17,500.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2024-20 authorizing the sale of block 1,002 point 01 and lot 101 to the County of Ocean.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of block 1002 point 01, lot 1 point 01 to the County of Ocean in accordance with NJSA 40A colon 12 dash 13B. This is to authorize the sale of the triangular lot in the business park to the County of Ocean and the sale amount is $150,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2024-18 amending chapter 313 entitled Trees.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending chapter 313 entitled Trees. Second reading, open the floor for public comment.
See, none, make a motion to close it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2024-18 amending chapter 313 entitled Trees. Second reading, open the floor for public comment.
See, none, make a motion to close it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-224 opposing the Home Based Jobs Creation Act, New Jersey Assembly Bill 2623.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey in opposition to proposed legislation bypassing local zoning for home-based businesses. If this legislation would pass, it would essentially override any local land use ordinances and classify certain businesses as permitted accessory uses. So they refer to it as the Home Based Jobs Creation Act.
Move it. Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-225 authorizing the appointment of full-time laborers for Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the employment of John Soklov, Vito Kehoe and Joseph Emmission as full-time laborers for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. And I would like to bring attention to Joe Emmission here who is with us tonight and will be starting in the near future with us.
Resolution 2024-226 authorizing the appointment of a full-time dispatcher trainee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the appointment of Cassidy L. May as full-time public safety telecommunicator trainee for the Township of Lacy Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Chief or captain, did you want to say anything? Because I see our new dispatcher is present tonight.
I don't, I don't have much prepared. Cassidy Myers, she's 24 years old, she went to college in Florida.
Cassidy, could you stand up so we could see you?
She's tall.
She's tall like her parents, yes.
Oh my god.
She's 24 years old, graduated from Lacy. I, now, her father probably doesn't remember me because I was a little kid, but they've been, they've been in Lacy forever, so I go back to the story, before Fess and Run was built.
So maybe we should leave that out.
The June Buggies back there, remember? So, I remember, so, yeah, my brother Mike, you know, remember, remember, you know, to me and my brother and I know you, corrections as well? Yes. So Cassidy comes from a good family, Lacy resident, lifelong, attended college in Florida, received a bachelor's in psychology?
Yes.
And now currently works at Catherine's Inn and has her certification for dispatch and we can't wait to have her join our...
That's wonderful, we're so happy for you. Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you chief. Resolution 2024-227 appointing a regular member to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey appointing Carrie Jennings as a regular member to the Environmental Commission for the Township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-228 awarding a contract for painting services for the Lenoka Harbor EMS Building.
Move it.
Second.
I dropped it again.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract to Ernesto's Painting Contractors LLC for painting services for the Lenoka Harbor EMS Building.
Move it.
This is, as approved in the 2024 municipal budget, the contract amount is $5,000 because Ernesto's is donating the paint.
Very nice, very nice, thank you.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes, and thank you for, to the Ernestos. Resolution 2024-229 awarding a contract for roof renovations for the Lacy Food Bank Building.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract to LR Watson Sun Roofing and Construction for roof renovations for the Lacy Township Food Bank Building at 102 Station Drive. As you may be aware, we did a resolution for this back in June, I believe it was, but unfortunately that agreement did not account for prevailing wage, so the new contract amount is $39,800.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-230 authorizing a refund of municipal truck parking fees.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of monies charged for municipal truck parking.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-231 authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-232 authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $11,349,739 and 40 cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve the caucus minute meetings from July 11, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve township minute meetings from July 11, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve executive session minute meetings from July 11, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve membership in the Fork River Volunteer Fire Company for Trent Colombo.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve an auxiliary, auxiliary, excuse me, auxiliary member in the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company for Rosaline Bianco?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. That's it? Comments from the committee? Mr. Dykoff?
So, real brief. First of all, congratulations to our new sergeant, and congratulations and welcome to our new employees. It's so nice to see you come here. It's such a great town to come work for. As you probably know, you know, Mr. Flynn, some others, you make a career out of it. And it's a good career. It's got its ups and downs, but I can tell you that it will serve you well in life if you serve it. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, I guess unsung heroes. So I guess I go back many, many years ago, and we were fighting to get the Seabreeze community approved. And there was some pushback, but we were finally able to get it done. And we knew it would change the complexion of the township, but little did we know how much this community would do to us. So recently, they had a function called Stuff the Bus. It's an annual function, and I didn't know about it until, I guess, you've done it. But thank you so much. It's such a wonderful, wonderful thing they did. And they collected, then you put it on, they put all the packs on a bus and took pictures. So Stuff the Bus. Who came up with that? You came up with Stuff the Bus?
The chair or back of the Stuff the Bus. But the whole team, you know, put together. And the school district was wonderful. They provided the bus. And so we were able to have a very successful day. And so, and then we donate everything to the school.
Thank you so much. It's well appreciated, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Dykoff. That was great to bring that up. And I just want to add to it, just because we're talking about them right now. They help with our food bank tremendously, along with a lot of other people. Don't misunderstand me, but they're also very good. They've been a good neighbor to us. It's as simple as that. They've been a really good neighbor to us here in Lacey.
They've become members of boards. They really do a nice job.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. And you're here.
Yes. Mr. Kennis?
Couldn't decide what to talk about tonight, so I have no comments.
Okay. Boy, that's a surprise. Mr. McDonald?
Called intimately or what?
No, no, he's enjoying himself.
Couple things. I was at the concert last night. It was pretty good. It took me back because it was all Elton John and Billy Joel music. So it took me back to, well, it took me.
Your younger days.
Yes. Let's just leave it at that. We had a good turnout. You know what? That's all I got.
That's all you have. Okay. Well, again, I just want to congratulate everybody that got promoted and a job position, and glad to have all of you. Welcome to the, what I call the neighborhood, you know? It's our little town of neighborhood, and we're glad to have all of you here. Thank you for joining us, that's for sure. I'm just trying to think what else I want to say. I do have one little thing. Walmart is having what's called a Wellness Day 2024. It's Saturday, August 3, from 10 to 2. And while you're over there having yourself checked out at Wellness Day, you could stop by the new car wash. They're having their grand opening on Sat, excuse me, tomorrow, Friday. They'll be grand opening at 11 o'clock. So if anybody's available to stop by, they're welcome to stop by. And I think that's all I have, too. Just glad to see all you here. It's nice to see a lot of faces. So I'll open up the floor to the public. Come on, Heather. Come on up, Heather. You can take the microphone and bring it back for the.
Tom's going to be moving it. I see it now.
And you guys that, excuse me for one minute, Heather. If anybody wants to go, you are welcome to leave now if you don't want to stay for all the other stuff. You're welcome.
Yeah. So you can go too, Joe.
Joe, if you want to head out, you can, buddy.
I'll see you next week.
Go right ahead, Heather.
Heather Scanlon, and tonight I'm representing the Municipal Alliance, and you can probably, as you can see, it says Lacey Alliance.
Great shirt.
And it's that time of the year when I like to come and talk about our 5K race. And most of you may be aware, or may not be aware, but this is our 24th race. I can't imagine when we first did this in 2001 that we'd still be doing this in 2024. A lot of races kind of dwindle down after a while. The director gets tired and, you know, whatever. But we're still at it. You know, we started it then because, as a fundraiser, to raise extra money for our, towards our programs. Now it becomes necessary because, as you know, we have been cut 70% since COVID from our grant money. So this race allows us to supplement the grant and still do our programs. So, and it really has become a community event because we have a lot of parts that anybody can participate. I always invite all of you to come, and if you don't want to do the 5K race, there's always the one-mile fun run. Haven't you done that?
I've done the one-mile fun.
Mayor McDonald? Yes, yes, I know. And so I welcome you to try to do that. And if not, we have the kitty dashes. So there's a little bit of something for everybody. I will say, and we have a lot of team challenges. And if you remember, Mayor Dave Most, who was mayor one year, he started a challenge to the police department that he would wash and polish a police car if five members of the police department could beat him. Well, it was nip and tug because he beat four of them. So it was the, well, maybe the three of them. But anyway, he washed and polished the police. So we have the mayor's trophy. Would you bring that up a second? So we, every year, we award what's called the mayor's trophy. So the fastest team of five members. So we started it in 2009. So you're welcome to try and compete for this. There's five committee people, correct?
I don't know.
I do believe the Lacey cross-country team has won at the last, what, 10 years?
I was just going to say that cross-country team, blah, blah, blah. We actually had to go to another side. And 2023 is on here, so.
You know what's a great event? Because I don't know if a lot of people out there realize, but it involves everybody. It's not just the Municipal Alliance. It is also our school. There's plenty of students that come over from the high school. There's just, you know, just regular people. A lot of people from out of town come in to run this race. So it is a huge undertaking. Our police department helps out a lot, and it's a huge undertaking, and we appreciate all the work you do, Heather.
Well, we appreciate the support from the township as well. This year, we have a little glitch in our course. The police department has asked us to go back to one of our previous courses, which is not a problem. We have it certified and everything. However, due to the construction at the intersection of Manchester and Haynes, the traffic light will be moved, and a telephone pole right now has been moved right in the middle of the path. So we have to do a little slight detour, which we're going to meet Public Works next week, hopefully, and see what we can manage and communicate that to our runners. But we do appreciate the support of the township for the event. Want to mention also that we have a lot of volunteer opportunities. This is not just for runners, but this is for volunteers as well. We have probably 35 to 40 volunteers, but it's a big undertaking because it's three events in one short time. And look, you get a shirt.
Lacey Alliance staff.
And you can wear it every year from then on. So we welcome people to, they can call recreation department and leave your name and number. You can volunteer. All you have to do is stand around and look nice. Look pretty.
At very early hours of the morning.
Yes.
We don't mention that when we're looking for help, right? They don't all have to get there at 6:00.
What date is that again? Is that?
August 24. It's always the fourth Saturday of the month. And again, I cannot stress and thank also that the sponsors of our race, because if it wasn't for them, we would not do as well as we usually do, and it really is appreciated.
If you wanted volunteers, what time would you like them?
Depends on what they're, if they're course marshals, we usually ask them to get there about 8:15. Some of us get there at 6:00.
Yeah, she didn't want to announce that. You could say.
Well, those are when we're cutting up the bagels and the oranges and everything else. So, yes, that's why we get there that early.
Yeah, so we have a setup for, we call it our kitchen area and everything, and we get some of the vendors, the bagel places donate bagels, and we have bananas and all that stuff. So anyway, we love to see people out. Thank you.
Heather, Heather, what's the oldest man? He's from Whiting. How old is he that he brought this to the course?
He is, I just actually spoke with his wife today because they hadn't registered. So I believe he's going to be 93.
Is he not running this year, if I'm under?
Well, he ran with his wife, and she's 87 this year. She now has congestive heart failure, so she can't run. So they walk. He won't run without her. So they are coming. I don't know that they're going to run, but I think I'll have them. We named.
I just spoke with them last weekend myself.
Oh, you saw them?
Yeah, I was at an 80th birthday party with them for somebody, and they weren't sure what they were doing yet.
No, I begged them to, I said, you don't have to run or walk. You can come anyway. Maybe he'll hand out the award. Because we did name the 90 and above award in the name of Harry Pepperman, and his wife's name is Dolores. And they're lovely people. They live in Whiting, and they've been doing this race for many years. We have, we have quite, we have two people over 85 males that are running as well.
Wow.
Female over 80, Helen Delacruz is one, so.
She always does. Good for her.
So you guys, you know, you have to live up to these other people.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate. Who else would like to come up? Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Seeing none.
Good evening. Is this on? Is it working? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Township Committee members. I'd like to draw attention to an article that was in the Lacey Patch. Gas station could replace historic Lacey property. The property housing the Warden House and former community center has been sold, and a convenience store gas station is proposed for it. A hearing is set before the zoning board at 6:30 PM on August 5 in the Lacey Township Municipal Building. Okay, so this article was posted, and there was a lot of comments made by our local individuals who live here in the town on how they feel about this. And I just took out a few of them because I want the Township Committee to understand how a lot of people do not approve of what you're doing. Okay, so Cheyenne KO, absolutely not. George Gumbos, we are fast becoming Brick Town South. Sheila Anderson, so sad. Donald Ferguson, every commercial venture seems to easily get a variance. What are zoning regulations for? Good question. Apparently just written to support land use lawyers and extort variance fees. Look at the traffic disaster Dunkin' Donuts Lacey Road is. A kindergarten student could see that doesn't belong. Can't wait to see traffic pattern at Lacey Road and Route 9. Courtney Valentine, well, no one should support whatever business they put there. I'm all in favor of that. Let it be known before they tear it down. It's really a shame something like this can happen to a part of our history. Linda Anafrank, the local government should be ashamed of themselves. The town has gotten to be so congested. When we moved here 16 years ago, it was wonderful. Now you can't even go out anymore on the weekends. Jeff Jarkevich, good luck. I vote these guys out every year, and the same ones keep on winning. It's a losing battle for 50 years. The town has gone to shit. Debbie Franzak, disgusting. Dominus Maximus, why are we erasing history? We definitely don't need another gas station, especially at that site. Mike Conti, just sad. KS Sick, wasn't only like 7,200 people that voted at the last election, more people need to show up. Greg Sensavere, if you contact Historical Society, they might be able to stop it from being demolished. I doubt that. Lacey doesn't need any more gas stations. Nick Vedder, this is just what the town needs. We definitely have a shortage of gas stations. Melody Pryor, there has to be a way, if there are enough citizens, to stop this. We have no history left. I was once proud to live here. Now it's time to leave. Jennifer Bentley, we do not need any more development in our town, especially on Route 9. We are not able to handle the traffic now, let alone it at that corner of Route 9 and Lacey Road is turned into a gas station. Is my understanding that a variance is required to accommodate parking? Our town zoning committee needs to vote no. Jaclyn DeLeve, disgraceful. Patty Thelhauser-Barrel, ridiculous to tear down Lacey history for more congestion. Shame on the committee. Francis Proios, our local government should be ashamed. That property has given to us on the condition it would never be sold. They know it, but did it anyway. Karen Fitzpatrick, we have no need for another gas station or strip mall. Enough already. Lindsay Liu, worst place for gas station. Diana Di Forte, sad if it goes down, gets torn down. Pamela Zussela, this town is really effed up. And now we're living in a Manhattan. So sad what they did here. Might as well just let all the people from Lakewood move here now. Richard Bidnick, I am without words. Obviously, our elected town officials do not care how the people of this town feel, and that is quite obvious by all of their actions. The selling of this property, which to many is somewhat illegal, is appalling. Their policies of allowing overdevelopment have caused all this traffic. Now they're going to put another crummy store that we don't need and have two historic buildings that have significance for our town torn down. I think it's time that we replace the people who are elected to serve us with individuals who actually care about this town and who are actually going to listen to the people they are responsible to, that being the taxpayers of Lacey Township. Petty Fieldhauser, outrageous. Kate de Blazi, this is pretty awful. Francis Proios, the property is given to Lacey Township.
Sorry, your time is up, Mr. Bidnick.
You didn't cut them off when they were speaking.
She wasn't over five minutes.
Oh, come on.
Heather was not over five minutes. She had a little bit less than a minute to go. Heather?
All right, I'll come back up again.
Carol, did you want, did you have something you wanted to get, come up?
How are you? I need some help or assistance. I called before regarding the Environmental Commission. I called Amy back in April. There, you gave me the number, and basically this was because we were talking about the geese and Cedar Creek and things like that. I wanted, I would like to join the commission. So you gave me a name of Catherine?
Yes.
Is Catherine the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so Catherine wrote me back in April and said, there'll be a meeting in May, and she's delighted to have me on the commission?
Well, so you have to submit, so typically you submit your resume, and then we review it, and then we vote on it, if there's an opening on the board.
She invited me and said I'm in.
Does she?
I understand that, and I've written two or three times. No, I just need help because.
Yeah, so you have to submit your resume to the Township Committee.
What resume?
A letter of interest and your resume. That's typically how any position that's open, any of the board positions.
Who do I write that letter to? Now that I'm not on the commission.
Veronica, the town.
To the clerk.
Okay.
To the clerk.
So if I fumble this next step, can you assist in any way to try and tell me whether I am or am not? Because I've been emailing her, and she just keeps writing back. Next month.
We've been trying to coordinate meetings with her, and she keeps not having it.
I'm trying to help you with that.
That's why we appointed Mr. Jennings tonight, because he was the first person to establish the Environmental Commission here in the Township of Lacey. He's very well-known here.
And there was somebody a couple months ago that got added to the commission?
I don't think so.
You announced.
We reappointed Catherine and another member that were currently on there.
There was something like two or three months ago.
Yeah, those were the ones with the expired terms, because she had told us she wanted to start a meeting.
It's just frustrating that there's no process and that I wasn't.
Well, the process, no, there is a process.
I wasn't advised of the process when I called you, and you said that I had to contact Catherine, and I did. And then I'm just waiting for Catherine to get back.
No, just you submitted, you submit a letter like that.
All right, so I thank you for your, for clarifying.
Whether it's the planning board or zoning board or any board, it's the same thing. You submit your resume.
But there's nothing anywhere to teach a resident how to.
Citizen Service Act. That's what it is. It's a New Jersey law. Citizen Service Act explains it all.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Mr. Bidnick, would you like to come back and finish?
By the way, I also, like, Carol had reached out to this individual, and she also said to me the same thing, to come and join at a meeting. And it's, you know, it's kind of sad that we don't seem, the people who are supposedly in charge do not really know the protocol or how things are supposed to go, so.
We're very well aware of how things are supposed to go.
Well, then why is the person who's in charge of the committee not explaining that?
Because she does not communicate well with us. We try to communicate with her.
I guess. All right, all right. So to continue, Kate de Blazi, this is pretty awful. Francis Proios, the property was given to Lacey Township on the condition it never be sold. I'm angry but relieved that it's not going to be more affordable housing or townhouses. Shame on the politicians for having damaged our quality of life with greedy overbuilding. Bernadette Manari, well, you can only hope that there's karma from the grave by those who donated the properties. Carol Shaw, keep the original structure for the store. Lynn Marie, don't want to say the words, but WTF, what is wrong with this town? It's definitely not like what it used to be. So my question is this. What happened with Mr. DeGeorge? Now, this property was listed twice, right? And there's that fee, $60,000. So did he have to pay the fee twice, $60,000? I hope he had to.
Why would he have to pay?
Because, well, there were two separate sales, and he bid on the first one, and because of a mistake that was made.
The first sale was null and void.
Null and void, so it just.
But what about the fee that goes to?
It was a refundable fee because the first sale was null and void.
It was a refundable fee because the first sale was null and void.
Okay, all right. So, all right, so that answers that question. Anyways, I just wanted to say, there's a lot of people in this town who don't agree with what you're doing. And you know, it's true, what that one person said about the number of people who vote. There are 22,000 registered voters. I think the mayor got 3,900, which is like 15% of the registered voters in this town. To say that you may have even some sort of a mandate or whatever is just not real and not true. And I have explained this to you before, why people don't vote. Because exactly what I'm saying, you don't listen to the people who you are elected to serve. I mean, unfortunately, in politics today in America, politicians just think that they can do whatever they want and get away with it. It's like in Washington. It's going on in our own state, and it's happening here in our own town. And the only way for us to make a change with doing this is to change the government or the people who are representing us to people who actually listen to our needs. I mean, I've been coming up here and speaking, and so has many other people, and we're just not happy. I mean, the town used to be a great place with all the overdevelopment that has happened. You've changed it forever, and we can't really go back. And the traffic on Route 9 is real, and there's more housing that's going up there. And you know what some of us would appreciate? That you actually spend money fighting these places that want to break every variance that they can to build these, I'm talking about commercial structures in our town. Make them stick within the guidelines of our laws. And if we're not going to do that, why do we even have any? I mean, at this point, it's true. Why are we even going to have any if we're not going to stick to them? So the issue is, I know you don't want to hear this because you think you can get away with doing this forever, but the people in the country, and not only in Lacey Township, are fed up with their government because they don't listen to what the people have to say. And I do care about the town. I care about our schools. I care about what we're doing here and how we can make it better. And the quality of life, that's basically, for me, is about the quality of life. And if our quality of life is really being changed in a negative way, then you people need to take notice of this. Now, I know our mayor stated when she was running for reelection again about progress, that, you know, in all this building, you know, we just have to deal with it. No, we don't have to deal with it. We can take our, you know, we're in charge of our own destiny, and you have the power to enforce and stop these things from happening. So I'm hoping when we have the meeting on the 5th, at the planning board, that they don't allow this project to go through. A gas station, that is the corner of our town. That is like the most significant part of our community, Route 9 and Lacey Road. A gas station? Please, we don't need that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else from the floor that would like to speak, Mr. Bender?
Yeah, I'll be brief. You know I'm against what he's talking about. The sad, I've been here for 38 years, and I have lots of memories in that community hall. And I feel very, very badly for the families who've been here for probably decades, if not century, and the memories that they have in those buildings. And I think it's a really sad thing, and I'm very sad over what's going on. I did my best to try and stop it. We couldn't do it. I feel bad that we couldn't do it, but it's going to be a sad day when they not. I don't know if we're going to be able to move the Warden House or not. I'm hoping that someone sticks to the word that he mentioned some time back. But as far as community hall, there's so many people in this town that have memories of things that they've done in that community hall. And I find it very sad that for dollars that those memories are going to be gone. It's my point. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
My heart was pounding. I want to thank General Flynn for giving me courage. Trump telling me to fight, fight, fight. I just found a document today with my grandfather's name on it. I saw him, I believe it was in 1972, on his deathbed. I just graduated second grade, and I don't exactly remember what he told me, but he told me someday I would be needed. And he would always be with me. His name is out front. He took the Smith name and put it on Franklin Wilbert's field. I know he would hate that. Franklin Wilbert, his name's on the thing with them. Franklin was a good friend of mine. My parents didn't like him, but I had a friendship with him through my neighbors. And, you know, he believed in the trust company. There was a lawsuit, the estate loss, or the daughter, sister lost, excuse me. So many generations of my family have fought for that building. I don't know what else to use. My two generations, a generation after my daughter, are Native Americans. Do I need to get the Native Americans? Somebody's got to save the building, save the property. We don't need a gas station. What about Bridge Creek? All your maps, your stuff you paid thousands and thousands of dollars to engineers for, they show, they're from 2017. I saw them online. They show Bridge Creek stops at the, behind the library. It doesn't. It goes, there's a tunnel. Are you trafficking children? What's going on under the elementary school? Why is there a tunnel under there?
It's a 72-inch drainage pipe from Cranberry Hill. It's a 72-inch drainage pipe, which is Drainage Basin Number One, coming from Cranberry Hill.
At the same time, my grandfather told me about this. You know, you put it through, and I remember there's a manhole right at the home plane at the ball field. Why, that's scary. That has always scared me. I have seen sublimic messages in 1976 when I was in sixth grade on the school. What's going on in the town? Is it the Freemasons, the Illuminati? You know, you took something that you say was worth $300,000, and you gave us something for $750,000 and told us to shut up. You know, there's, is there some kind of insurance fraud going on? What's going on with the trust company? Do we have to sue the trust company? What about the money that's still in the estate?
I have no idea what you're talking about here. Some of the numbers you're throwing out. I have no idea what you're talking about right here.
I'm talking from my heart. My heart's pounding through my chest. What you're doing is sickening. You didn't make a clerical error. You knew what you were doing, and you're disgusting.
Yes, Carol.
All right. Charles Smith, died 1918. I've done tons of research. I was actually born on his birthday. Does anybody here know who Charles Smith was? Multi-millionaire from Manhattan, sportsman, came down here. His father owned property. He bought more property. He bought the estate that was known by the Carmen family. Carmen hired Pharaoh, the architect, same as the schoolhouse, to build this giant hotel, and then he died. When he died, he was friends with Smith, Charles A. Smith, from Manhattan, friends with the Carnegie's, all from the Gilded Age. He was probably in his 50s, came down here hunting and fishing all the time. Had a giant schooner. He turned it into the Riverside House. He worked it as the Riverside House. He finally sold it to the Enos, of which the daughter-in-law, Harry Eno, the son, daughter-in-law Katie Eno, she was a warden. She became the hostess. He then went back to New York. He married a woman. She ended up getting very, very sick. 10 years later, he put her in a nursing home, and he came back down here, and he bought the entire estate of where we now know is the game farm. Before it was the game farm. He owned 500 acres, the entire corner of Forkett River. Anyway, make a long story short, he sold it to the game farm. We brought in all these people from Scotland to manage all the birds. This is still Charles Smith doing all this. He was friends with Ernest Napier. P.S. Ernest Napier married Katie Eno later on. It's a love story for Lacey, for the history. When he died, his estate had over $300,000 in cash money. He gave a lot of money to the township. He had tons of real estate holdings, everything. It never got dispersed because his wife was still alive. Now, he knew his wife was alive, but the trust company never gave up all the money, which is why the town, the community hall was built for $10,000, maybe $11,000, not 15, which was given. It then went to, it was owned by a guy named George Raroud. George held the deed. George died. A trust was founded for George Raroud, and then George's wife said, "You know what? I've had enough of this. Let's form a committee for the Charles A. Smith Memorial Association," which included Judge Minter. And I don't know if you guys know the Finn Estate up on Water Road. That's Judge Minter's house. That's the judge that was on the committee. He's friends with Charles Smith. He wrote all these contracts. Him, Grant, there was, so we had an Eno on the committee. I've shown who the committee is. At any rate, the community hall gets done. They don't have any money because they can't get the rest of the money out of the estate because the wife's still alive. Letters go back and forth. This is why I think Joanne was mad. The estate still exists today. In Ocean County, Charles Smith's estate still exists, whether we knew it or not. When his wife finally died in 1957, there was a check written to this township, and I don't know how they got away with it because at Lacey was not a beneficiary, that gave the balance of the $15,000 to the township in 1957. If you keep following the paperwork, apparently Charles Smith made, I think her name was Sophie, she got five grand back when he died. She died, didn't have any beneficiaries. Her money is now rolled up and still in the state of New Jersey. So what Joanne is saying is his estate is still open. Beneficiaries are still on the list. We know this. So I just wanted to clear up. If you never knew who Charles Smith was, he was an amazing human being. He changed the face of this town. He brought in all the people from Scotland, which were all the, the entire game farm was him, the Eno's captains in, that's all Charles Smith. So if we want to forget him, we can forget him by selling his stuff and moving his name and whatever. But I'd like to celebrate somebody that actually changed the face of this town. So I think that's why Joanne's upset because her grandfather was on that committee, and her great-grandfather was on the committee, the postman in town, the tax collector. Cornelius Updike, school teacher?
You're right with the name.
Also on the committee, meaning these were all township people that believed in what Charles Smith wanted to do. So when you know the history, and as Mr. McDonald knows, his wife is part of the Historical Society, your mother's part of the Historical Society, I'm part of the Historical Society. I like this stuff. I'm a history buff from way back when. Love it, love it, love it. But all I have to say is if it's going to go bye-bye, I would like to establish something bigger than the community hall to remember Charles Smith. I'd like that entire federal land to be the Charles Smith Environmental Center. So we would have someplace for our kids to go because those 500 acres are still not available to anybody in this township. And those are the most valuable acreage of the entire township on the waterfront. And we're not allowed to go in there, so.
It's owned by the feds now, if I'm not mistaken, and it's going over to the federal fishing game.
Right, but I'm just saying, I think we have a say in trying to remember Charles Smith. So I just wanted you to know the story and what Joanne was trying to express, but it-
Appreciate you.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Seeing none.
No.
Linda.
Linda, I'm sorry.
Linda Miller, Forkett River. I just want to say that, listening to all this, there are a lot of people in the town that don't realize what the longtime people living here are really asking for. My only comment right now is sometimes progress is not progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll say, is there anybody else from the audience that'd like to comment?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-234, resolution of the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald? I'm sorry, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckall?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?